And because water is essential.
Right, and I think one of the things I think that bodes in our favor is we've never held a seat on the Detroit Water and Sewer Department Board. And with the situation of Detroit saying we don't know what direction they're going to go or what impact that's going to have on future rates. But this is a scenario where we're one of the charter members of the KWA, one of the incorporating members, I think if that's correct. And we have not only a seat but a significant vote as to what happens.
If you want to see one of the possibilities for the city of Detroit and where they may be heading, Sunday's Detroit Free Press front page article about turning over their whole water and sewer system to Oakland, Wayne, and Macomb County.
Say if the governor made us partner with Detroit, would that... Would there be any way of telling them, "No, we're not going to do this"? Is that part of our consent?
I'm not involved in that, or I would have no way to answer that question.
Counselman Neely, do you have any more questions?
Not for Howard, no.
Okay, any council members have any questions for Howard?
Thank you.
I just, Jerry, if you could come in, I would just like for you to talk about the rate comparison and any study that your department may have done in looking at this project projected for the current year and then maybe for however many years out that you projected with either going with Keiragandi, the costs, and what would it be with Detroit? And I know that, well, I don't know for sure, but I had heard that the state wanted some comparisons like that, and I'm just curious if you could share that with the council.
Well, I think, yeah, let me tell you what we have done as we've looked at this.
Okay.
And I would say this generally, we've had a lot of conversations with Drain Commissioner, a lot of internal conversations. We have been involved with Treasury, asked questions. We clearly have looked at this and understand the financial situation that the water and sewer system in the city of Flint is. We understand the significant increase and the significant burden that's been placed on residents. And I can tell you if our conclusion on this was we would be adding additional costs to the residents and businesses in Flint, we wouldn't be looking at it any longer. If you think about where we are right now, if we think about what does it take to get the water delivered, we have, you know, of course, the contract with the city of Detroit, and we pay around $11 million a year for that. About 4.4 million of that is in what's called fixed cost. About 7.3 million or so is the commodity cost. So that's what we pay basically to Detroit. And on top of that, we do operate our treatment plant, and that's about another $2.7 million. So we're paying about $14 million, $14.4 million between our payments to Detroit and operation of the water treatment plant. And those costs have been going up an average of eight and a half percent a year for the last few years. It wasn't that long ago that Detroit instituted their famous fixed-cost methodology, which significantly increased the costs to the city of Flint. And as we look at the experience that we've had with Detroit and the likelihood of future increases, and you know, it's not, it wouldn't be unusual for us to be projecting a seven or eight percent increase over those years. And if you took $14.4 million in this year and you moved it out, and that's FY '13, and if you moved it out to FY '20, you'd find we'd be paying Detroit and also for the cost of operating our treatment plant, about $22.7 million. That's just the, you know, anticipated increase in our costs. Now, as we have looked at joining KWA and, you know, clearly dedicating ourselves to some, you know, long-term financial commitment there, and recognizing we'd also have to make some minor adjustments to, improvements to our treatment plant, we understand that we would have to pay KWA for our portion of the fixed construction costs. Going forward, we would have to pay for the, some portion of operating costs, and we'd have to continue, of course, to operate our treatment plant. When we look at those numbers, we look at the cost, and we find the year that the plant in theory would, the KWA in theory would be in operation, we'd find that the city's cost would be about $14.9 million. And that would be compared to, at that time, probably what our projected Detroit cost of about $17.75 million. So you see an immediate, once the water comes from KWA, you see an immediate drop in costs. And then you see that a large portion of our cost with KWA is fixed. And while we have some other increases, we would see that this $14.8 million by FY '20 would probably be around $16.5 million. But that's compared to $22.6 million that we think our cost would be to continue with Detroit. So that, I mean, that really is the business case in very short summary when we look at that. Cumulatively, there's about a $19 million gap in favor of the city of Flint over the, over about eight years. So kind of net positive, as we've looked at it, from just strictly from the financial standpoint, it makes sense. And that's kind of where we are financially.
Let me ask questions starting over here. Counselman Neely, do you have a question for Jerry Ambrose?
Jerry, you were talking, kind of, it was muffled just a bit, but I think, let me see if I can pick up what you were saying here. It looked like you were reading off a chart or a graph, is that correct?
Yeah, some work papers, yes.
Has that been provided to anybody here on council?
No.
Okay, I would like a copy of that as well. The seat with the cost comparison pushing out, you know, you pushed out quite a few years, maybe eight years to 10 years, your cost comparison to Detroit versus KWA, is that right?
That's what this is, yes.
Yep. Now, when you talk about a drop in cost, you're not talking about a drop in cost what the current user is paying now, you're just talking about paying more slower, correct?
I'm not sure I understand.
Well, when you say the drop in cost over a period of time...
Right.
Does that mean our cost...
No, I said that our cost, the cost for the city of Flint will increase at a slower rate than the cost with Detroit.
Correct. So essentially, if the user rate is here now, they won't experience a decrease, they'll just experience an increase slower. Am I to understand that correctly?
Well, I, you know, a lot of that would get into, you know, actual details of how we would put all of the financing together. There would be, I believe, based on this, an immediate about $2.5 million drop.
You said an immediate drop in our cost today?
Yes. But that's, and that's important. You have to do, look at that in the context of what is a, about an $80 million cost to run the water and sewer system in total. You also have to look at it in the context of the significant infrastructure needs that this system has. This system has some 500 miles of distribution pipeline. And I say that simply for saying this is a significant financial advantage to the city. But one would have to then, as I believe is mentioned before, it would be up to the city and the system to have to decide what to do with that.
Okay, just so I'm making sure I hear you correctly. You saying that if we engage in this agreement, we'll see a $2 million reduction in the current cost to our users?
No, I did not say that. I said it would be an immediate $2.5 million drop from what we would likely be paying the city of Detroit at that point in time.
That we'd likely be paying the city of Detroit.
Costs are going to go up in both situations.
Okay.
Right? But the cost for the city of Detroit, given the past history that we have of eight and a half to nine percent increases on an annual basis, exceeds significantly the costs, the cost increases that we would see with KWA.
Correct. But that cost can only be, that cost savings only will be realized once the completion of the pipeline is done, and then we'll start using the KWA water, correct?
That's correct, yes.
So we're looking at maybe three to, three and a half years out?
We are looking likely at three years out where we continue to pay Detroit. That's correct.
Okay, before we start seeing, now, with that, three years out, would our users see a cost reduction from the current rate that they're currently paying now?
No, no, they would not. They would see a, their costs would be, the cost of our system would be less than having continued to stay with Detroit.
Right, that's what I said earlier.
Yes.
They won't see a reduction in their current rate, but they'd just be paying less moving forward, upward versus Detroit. That was my initial question.
And I'm looking at this in terms of the cost of the system, and how the cost of the system and what we're, what it, what impact we're able to make in three years over reducing leakage to looking at more efficiencies in the operation of our system. So it's a little hard to say how that translates into rates, but I can tell you the total cost of operating the system if we stay with Detroit by 2020 will be almost $20 million greater than if we invest with KWA.
Right, and I understand, and I think what I said was pretty accurate, because when I'm explaining this to a senior citizen that's paying a high water bill, and they say, "Well, you made a vote to go with the KWA", and they're expecting to see a reduction in their rate, I need to make sure that I get it from you, that accurate account of what is going to happen with the current rate. And so just, I don't want people to be misled or confused about what this really means. It means that we still would be paying a current rate, and we'll be paying less faster than staying with Detroit.
We would project that any rate increases, if we were with KWA, would be significantly less than with Detroit, if we stayed with Detroit.
Okay. Now, during a period of time when the, when the construction period is going, I know the KWA is an independent body, will be financing the construction portion, but will we, immediately, will we have any financial obligations coming from the city coffers going out to the construction or the bond payment for the KWA?
That's not our expectation. The contract with KWA does provide for what's called an entry fee, I believe. But in negotiations, discussions with the Drain Commissioner, we have, I think, found a path where we would not be appropriating, spending any money with KWA until the water began to flow.
So for the three-year period of doing the construction, we would not see any cost to the construction that we have to pass on to our users currently?
I can't, I cannot speak for what the city and the administration and the council does. There is a part of the contract that allows for each community to pay some upfront costs to get this project going. I've agreed that if it helps the city to waive those upfront costs.
Okay, I greatly appreciate that. Now, Jerry, the cost, also we say there's going to be some upgrades needed to our water treatment facility to accommodate the flow from Port Huron with the KWA water. How much is that cost, what is that cost, and how are we going to finance that?
That's part of our cost projection.
As part of your what?
That's part of the analysis that we did here, even taking into account that we would begin to have, we would have to begin to pay for upgrades to the plant. The cost is still there, the cost savings are still there.
The analysis that we didn't get?
That one, yes.
Okay. I would like to see that analysis and that chart as it relates to the analysis of making sure that we understand how much would that be. Now, in your, in that chart that you have, in your analysis, will there be another water rate increase to our current users now to pay for the upgrades?
We have not discussed that at all. Our, we are hoping that we can stabilize rates. I think, however, it is, would not be realistic to say that rates will drop.
Say it again, I'm sorry.
It is not realistic to say that based on this, you would see a reduction in rates. But we certainly hope to stabilize rates.
Will we see an increase based upon our current fiscal position as it relates to water rates?
Really cannot tell you that right now. We will know better in 60 days as we put together the budget for next year. We look at the impact that the last rate increases have had, the operational efficiencies we've tried to get at the water and sewer systems.
And just, I want to make this clear, so nobody be misunderstood. I know we have to embrace the future, we really do. But to get a better picture of what that future could look like, information is a necessity. It's a necessity. You can't have those charts, and you can't keep that information close to your chest, then come here to this body, I can only speak for myself on this body, come here to ask us to do something in short order based upon some gloom or doom that could be pending. We need information to make those, to make those decisions. I love what Jeff is doing at the county, and I understand the timeframe, but information is vital. 25 years, Jerry, 25-year agreement that we're going to engage in, and you've given us a whole bunch of variables. Okay, let me, let me ask this question then. If the water lawsuit that Scott Kincaid has in about the overcharging of rates for some of the users inside the system, if it is ruled in the favor of the plaintiffs, how does that place us with our, with our water and sewer funds?
That would be a very serious detriment to the financial footing for the water and sewer funds.
And how could we, could we, could we sustain that as well as go forward with the KWA and provide the upgrades that's necessary and needed?
Well, the reality is, if we stay with Detroit, we will pay millions of dollars more to Detroit just to continue that relationship when we know that there are other alternatives. So whether we had some other occurrence which affected the financial stability of the system, the fact remains from our analysis that staying with Detroit is more expensive to the users of this system over time than staying with KWA.
Over a period of time, but I just want to make sure that the users are not going to be sustaining additional increases to offset all these other variables while we engage in another, you know, Jeff, what is the total cost for this, about a half a billion dollars?
Based on the last estimates and the actual bid that we took a week ago, about $274 million.
Okay, and so we're going to be investing a lot of money into this project with a lot of variables over our head. Now, all options are not great options. We're in a tough situation, and I think people understand that. But in order for me to make sure that I make a clear decision and be able to disseminate this information effectively about the direction that we need to go in, I think information needs to be forwarded to this body. And if you have been forwarding to certain individuals on this body, that information surely hasn't made it to everyone. And so we need a direct information gathering point, and so we can make a good informed decision for the citizens of the city of Flint. And I think we all can agree that the best, the best decisions need to be made for this community.
Counselman Lawler?
Jerry, you just gave us a analysis for KWA versus using Detroit.
You just gave us an analysis for KWA versus using Detroit water, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Has there been an analysis done by you, or are you aware of an analysis that's been done, using the Flint water versus KWA and Detroit?
There's no study other than the ones that have been talked about here tonight. Those, those studies, that discussion about using the Flint River were part of the discussions. Bottom line, as everyone has said, I think the conclusion here has been that is not the alternative that's in the best interest of the city of Flint.
I didn't get that. When, when using the, I understand that it's, it costs to treat the water more in the, of the Flint River water, but I'd like to see an analysis of utilizing the Flint River water, the treatment cost that it will take to use a Flint River water, and using KWA or Detroit as a backup. For me, that would give me a better analysis, that would give me a full analysis of the three options, and not just these two. Can you produce that?
I don't have that study. Again, I mean, we will, we can talk with the Drain Commissioner, we can talk, Mr. Croft, is there something other than what we've talked about tonight that we have that we can provide? What's that? We have the Roe study? Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Well, I'm just referencing the studies we've been talking about, have been discussed here already, are the studies that exist, and we'll be glad to provide those.
The, the study that points out what Councilman Lawler and Councilman Nolden want, I think we're going to get on a disk here yet tonight? We're trying to get it here for you that does spell out the cost by Roe Engineering, Cities Engineers. I'm only going to get one disk here, I hope. I hope we get it here. But the bottom line is you'll have that disk. It talks about the costs using the Flint River. I think Howard has already talked about his meetings with the DEQ and how they're going to make you go through a different set of rules, et cetera, so he might elaborate on that. But the report that you're, that seems to be critical for you, Councilman Lawler, and you, Councilman Nolden, will be here tonight in a disk form. Now, if the good Madam Clerk or her assistant could maybe get copies of the discs for you all, should have that tonight.
Thank you. And so, but will that be inclusive of using a backup to the Flint River?
I guess I don't have the whole question.
An analyst of the cost of using the Flint River water, and then when...
For a permanent source of water.
Right, as a permanent source of water, just for Flint. And then an analysis of what it would cost for using KWA as a backup, or Detroit as a backup?
No, this report has three costs in it. It has the cost of KWA, the cost of the city of Detroit, and the cost to the city of Flint to use the Flint River.
Okay.
As its primary source. If you use the Flint River as a primary source, you have your own backup built right into the system. It's my understanding that when you spent the $45 million, there's two different intakes? The backup's already there. You do not need the KWA, you do not need the city of Detroit if you use the Flint River as your primary drinking source.
Okay, so then, the analysis that will be brought forth will then clear, clearly point out that it's cheaper for the, for the residents of the city of Flint to use KWA versus Flint River?
Yes, and it goes into great detail as to the reasons why. It's been a long time since I've looked at it myself. I actually gave a presentation. Not all of the same council members were here that were in that particular presentation, but it goes into the costs, the dams, the treatment processes, the different things that are required to treat Flint River water as opposed to taking a contract with Detroit and/or the KWA. So it's all in there.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, any other questions for Jerry? Councilman Sargentson?
If we use the Flint River for our main source, we would have to have different...
We would have to have different regulations using the Flint River as our main source. Like you said, we'd have to, we'd have to fix the dams, and we'd have to spend more money on the chemicals and whatnot. And so, actually, that would, I'm just trying to figure this out in my own mind. We have to, we can't even use the Flint River as a main source until we put some money into the river itself for dams and whatnot. That's all addressed in the, in the study that you'll be getting a copy of. So we won't, that is not an option anyway, then, is that correct? I mean, at least until... No, it's an option, that would be part of that cost equation. Come in there, yes.
Okay. Councilman Freeman?
I didn't hear you address it, but if we were to go the river route, how would we finance that?
I have no idea.
I mean, is that even a feasible, just from a financial standpoint, is that something that the city of Flint could do?
It would be extremely difficult for the city of Flint to add any debt of its own at this time.
And part of the reason for high water costs is because of the high amount of debt that we have at the water plant? I mean, is that included in it?
Debt is part of the, of the cost structure of the system, yes.
And what do we have out there currently?
It was a $45 million upgrade.
So I think I heard earlier the Commissioner said something about $60 million additional dollars to upgrade that plant to treat river water because of the difference in...
Correct.
...in that water compared to lake water. So just before you even get out the gate, would be an additional $60 million that the residents would have to pay on our own versus going into some sort of authority through Keiragandi where that cost would be smoothed out across multiple jurisdictions rather than just the city.
Correct.
And that doesn't count the actual day-to-day operation of the plant.
Correct.
Okay, Councilman Sargentson, and then Neely?
And also, if we're not going to use the Flint River for a main source, we wouldn't have to do as many upgrades to use it, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, Counselman Neely?
Yeah, I think Mike hit on what I was going to ask, is about upgrades are going to be required for our treatment facility regardless, correct?
That's correct, Counselman Neely, and the report will show it, that if you upgrade to use the Flint River, and again, this is the Cities Engineers report, if you use the Flint River as your primary source, you're looking at approximately $61 million in upgrades that are borne by the city. If you use KWA as your source of water, you're looking at about $7 million in upgrades.
How much?
Seven.
Seven.
61 to treat river water and upgrades, about $7 million in upgrades to treat lake water.
Right, and Jeff, I don't want to get too much into the science of it, but $61 million just to deal with the hardness of the water, or because of the reverse osmosis is the process we currently use at our treatment facility, we won't have to retrofit or go to a different type of treatment process, will we?
That's part of it, but another big cost factor that, it's easy to forget about the fact that the only way you can use the Flint River 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 12 months out of the year, is if you hold enough water in the Holloway Reservoir, the Kersley Reservoir, and the Thread Creek Reservoir. And this calls for major improvements to those dams to be able to hold enough water to get the city through in the July-August dry times. So yes, part of its equipment in the facilities, but another major part of the cost is the dams. The Holloway Reservoir Dam would have to be raised two feet, 18 inches from where it is today, to be able to guarantee to hold enough water, make sure there was enough just for the Flint customers in a hot August like we had last year.
Right, and I remember that study just a little bit, Jeff, but going through the long-term projections, I can't remember quite, quite the exact number about the long-term projections, but after the modifications and/or upgrades, if we went to our Flint River water as a primary source of drinking water, over, if we look at it from a projected long-term view, say 25 years or so, would that cost equalize itself for the initial investment for the repair of those dams? the initial investment for the repair of those dams? Would that cost then be spread out over a period of time where, uh, that, uh, the cost could be reduced to our users?
The comparison in Roe's report was based on apples and apples. You need to spend sixty-one million dollars to use the Flint River and that's good for twenty-five years. X amount of dollars to stay with Detroit for twenty-five years, X amount of dollars with KWA. I don't believe the report goes well beyond the twenty-five or thirty-year mark because that's all that they were cha-challenged or tasked to do. Um, I don't have, but I think there is background information that it costs literally millions for the city to try to maintain those dams, including the Hamilton Street Dam. We're all familiar with that. The Hamilton and/or the Utah Street Dam would have to be totally rebuilt. Um, I think the last cost on that was around nine, ten million. Those dam...that dam is one that I forgot to add in because that's the dam that creates the reservoir for the plant to actually draw out of. So dams also have an annual maintenance requirement that is, you know, beyond what I can give you because it's, it's been something the city's been doing, not us. So it is an apples-to-apples for twenty-five years in this report that I hope you receive tonight.
All right, thank you, Jeff, and I, and I just have a question, Mr. President, for Peter, uh, being that he's here. Uh, now, we just learned tonight under PA 72, the opinion of some, um, is that we have the authority to engage in this decision even though it has financial implications. Is that your understanding, Peter?
Uh, my understanding is that, uh, the emergency financial manager remains emergency financial manager under PA 72 and is responsible for financial decisions affecting the city. Uh, that has not changed. Um, however, this is a decision that affects the city. Uh, it's a monumental decision, uh, that will affect the city for decades to come, and there is nothing illegal about council considering, uh, a decision of this nature and adopting a resolution, uh, on this matter. Again, that, uh, can occur, uh, under the rubric of the, of PA 72, uh, and the emergency manager, financial manager retains that power, uh, but, um, unless he were to veto or rescind in action by council, council can certainly a-adopt a resolution that's been presented.
Right, but my question is, I know we can adopt a resolution because it's just a vote and a piece of paper with hollow meaning if it has no authority to engage into a, 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 a contract, but my question to you, is your understanding of PA 72, if this possesses enough financial implications, where is this a decision to engage in a contract by this body or the emergency manager?
Well, I answered your question. I mean, I said that under PA 72, the emergency financial manager remains the emergency financial manager, meaning he has the responsibility for financial matters affecting the city. This clearly is a financial manager ma- matter affecting the city. I wouldn't look at the resolution as a hollow piece of paper. Uh, this is a call for city leaders to show leadership on a monumental issue before this community, um, and so inviting a council to weigh in on that matter seems appropriate to me.
I, I understand that, Peter, but let me just try to ask this one more time. Um, uh, Peter...
This will be the third time that I told you that under PA 72, the emergency financial manager is responsible for financial matters affecting the city.
Okay.
This clearly is a financial manager matter affecting the city.
I understand, I understand.
It does remain under his control.
I understand that answer, Peter. Let me, let me retry this one more time in a different way. Is this a financial matter? This...
I just used the word that it is clearly a financial matter.
Okay, and the financial manager is over financial situations? That's a yes or no question, Peter?
A financial matter is over financial situations, I suppose that is an accurate statement.
You, you provide no help for me. Thank you.
All right, any other questions for anyone that's here this evening? I, I just want to take the opportunity to thank everyone for being here. I, I know that this was done on a special order. Um, I know that, um, the Drain Commission, uh, has to start looking at some stuff. I'm really concerned personally about delaying of this, not, not because people didn't get the information, but I don't want Detroit to make a decision or I don't want the emergency managers or the state to make a decision before I have the opportunity. I think I have the opportunity tonight, um, but whatever the wishes of the council are, are, are fine with me, but I want to thank everyone for being here. I think we've gotten a lot of information tonight. Council members want some more information. I don't think this resolution is going to change between tonight and when or if we act on it. I know the residents of this community are, are really upset about water and the rates of water, and when you start talking to them, the first thing they say is, to me, we need to get away from Detroit. That's, that's their number-one issue, and to me, this is a cost-effective way, um, for us to get away from Detroit, and I think the timing is of the essence in that, um, you know, I think that we need to, to take some sort of position on this, whether it's tonight or sometime soon, but I want to thank everyone...
Mr. President.
...for being here, and I really appreciate, um, all the dialogue that all my council colleagues have had with everybody on this very important issue for the city of Flint.
Mr. President, I'd...I would move Resolution 130165.
Resolution 130165 has been moved. Is there support?
Support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. What were you going to want, you know, did you want...
She wanted to know if she supported it.
Um, Jackie supported it, I believe.
Um, I'm, I'm going to, um, I would, I would actually like to make a substitute motion to, um, postpone it one week until I get this information, because if I vote on it tonight, I'm not voting for it.
Okay, there's a substitute motion to move and support?
We have a special meeting next week, next week on next Monday, if we possibly can, and then I, I'll have the information, and then I'll be able to make an informed decision.
And to set a meeting for next Monday at what time, Councilman Nolden?
At five-thirty.
At five-thirty?
And this will be the only thing on agenda.
Do we have to wait till Monday? Why do we need to wait till Monday?
Well, you know, give enough time for people to be able to get the information that he needs, and I can read the information, and I, I'm, I'm, I'm waiting on it.
We do it Thursday?
The motion's been moved and supported.
Wait, hold on, hold on. There's, there's a motion before us, moved and postponed, and moved to postpone, supported, with the request to have a special council meeting on Monday, uh, must be around, uh, eighteenth?
Eighteenth.
The eighteenth at five-thirty. Okay? Any further discussion on the motion?
Yes.
Ms. Councilman Neely?
Yes, and, and I want to make sure that people understand this, that, is that we want to make sure we make the best decision, and anybody who's opposed to us having information to make this decision is not really, in my opinion, acting in the best interest of the city of Flint. Mr. Wright has moved forward to try to get us the information tonight. He sent over to his office to try to get copies for us tonight based upon our request. I would hope that our administration and emergency manager internally will also take a lead from Mr. Wright in trying to provide us with that information, uh, as we move forward. There's even confusion in, uh, amongst the mayor and the city attorney whether or not that we have the oblig-, uh, well, not obligation, but the opportunity to vote on this to make it binding, in a binding agreement with, uh, the KWA or not. Mr. Bate has made his, has, uh, said that he believes, in so many words, uh, that it's the emergency manager will make the decision. The mayor has said that he thinks the ball is in our court. Even that has to be worked out, but I don't think, this doesn't have to be a declaration of war amongst council members. It's just about getting information...
Exactly.
...to make the best decision for this resident, the residents of the city of Flint, and I think that is the most important thing that we can do, and, and Mr. Wright, if, if next Monday, I think next Monday we can resolve this issue, that, um, I know you're going to move forward with some signings of this Wednesday, but I think once we get the information, that this body would be more comfortable to engage in a vote, um, while I can speak for me, getting that information, looking at those charts, making sure that this is the best decision for the residents of the city of Flint moving forward for the next twenty-five years. And so, uh, I would hope that we can postpone this and reconvene at a special meeting to get this done because, I mean, even Mr. Freeman voted against a public hearing for Parks, Park, uh, Park Master Plan because he said they never came to him and gave him information. And so I think we should postpone, uh, that's going to be my vote, to get the information that's necessary so we can make an informed decision, so we can all be comfortable.
Mr. President, I would agree that they didn't come forward and give me the information. The only difference is here is that everything that's been asked for tonight, with the exception of maybe one report from Tucker, uh, Tucker Young, is it, or Tucker, I think it's Tucker Young, uh, has already been provided to us. Um, I've been on this body this time, uh, for nearly, well, over three years now, and, um, I don't need any further information to make a decision. All of the things that, um, you know, another week is just going to give us another opportunity to reread everything that we've already had, so if we don't have information three years into the process, then shame on all of you for not doing your jobs. Um, I didn't disengage in, in my job because an emergency manager was appointed. I remained, and I chose to, uh, remain engaged in that process, and when I wanted to know what was going on with the water pipeline, I got on the phone and I said, "Mr. Kurtz or Mr. Brown, can I get, uh, fifteen minutes of your time so we can sit down and talk about the water process?" And I was, and I was at the table because I chose to be at the table. Um, it's easy to sit out here and say, "Well, nobody will give me information." Well, they won't give you information if you don't go and ask for it, and that's what I did. So I, yeah, and you could subpoena it, as Mr. May said. Um, I made a good faith effort to get the information, and the information was given to me. So I'm very comfortable after being here for three years and reviewing all of the information that's been available to move forward with it. Um, I don't have a problem, I'll be voting no on postponement, but if, if it gets postponed, then we'll come back Monday, we'll have the same, uh, three-hour discussion, and we'll probably be at the, at the same point with the same information that we've already been given, uh, over the last three years. So if it's the will of the body to postpone it, then we'll postpone it. If not, I'm ready to move forward with it tonight.
See, that, those are the type of insightful indictments that are made that divides us, this council body, trying to make a good decision for the city of Flint. Your relationship with Mike Brown, Ed Kurtz is significantly different than Councilman Lawler's, mine, Councilman Sargentson, and probably others, that we can't get information when we request it or, or, or good faith information. Um, I made several requests for information never to be delivered, and so I have to represent the residents the way that I see fit, Josh, and, and I just said, "We don't need to be divided on this," and those type of indictments saying that some of us are, are not doing our job is not going to bring us together to do the, uh, the will of the people, trying to make the best, uh, decisions for them, pushing forward. You, just a few weeks ago, voted no on a public hearing for a master planning for Parks because you said you didn't get information. Megan Hunter was here putting the information before you, and you still voted no, and then it failed, and we had to come back and revisit it again. So are, are we asking, in, in this point here, oh, Josh, you don't have to respond to it, but, because I, I truly don't want to get in the back and forth, but, but let's just get the information and allow us the opportunity so we all can have a comfort level such as yours, making a decision as we move forward. That's, that's all. I don't want to fight...
And I, I appreciate that, Councilman, but when I ask you specifically what information you need to make a decision, I, I, you can't even name the information that you need to make the decision.
I think I was clear.
So that if we, if we, if we come back Monday, I want to be prepared to make that decision. So I'm hopeful that over this next week, you'll reach out to the administration and not just sit back and wait for them, but you'll, you'll be proactive about it.
Would you assist me, would you assist me with that effort because you can give the information?
I will, absolutely, and I've assisted you in the past when you've requested information, and you've called me and said, "I can't get this or can't get that," and I've made every effort to get that information for you.
And, and that's the type of partnership that the residents deserve, and I, and I, and I look forward to our partnership and getting us that next information.
But what's happened often in the past is that we make these requests at these meetings, and nobody follows up on it. Nobody on our side follows up on it. So I'm hopeful that you'll reach out, Councilman, and we'll get that information.
Absolutely, together we can do it.
And, and just, just let me respond to, to the conversation that's going on, because this did come at a very, uh, short time, and I personally called all the council members except for Councilman Lawler, and Councilman Nolden, um, had committed, uh, to contact him. Every council person that I talked to, I asked them, I explained to them what the resolution was going to be about, talked to them about it, and I asked them if they needed more information. Uh, some council members said yes. Councilman Neely, I made arrangements with Ed Kurtz for you to meet on Friday. Um, I asked you if you needed any other information from anyone else, Jerry Ambrose, anyone, and, and you said that you wanted to meet with Ed Kurtz, and you met with him, to my understanding.
Yeah.
And to my understanding, when I talked to Ed Kurtz today, that he provided you all the information that he could that you requested, and I, I don't know if that's true or not, but you, I know you've never lied to me and Ed Kurtz has never lied to me, so at this meeting this evening, I assume that after you met with Mr. Kurtz on Friday, that you received all the information or requested all the information that you wanted. So I don't want anyone here to think that no one had the opportunity to get the information and that there was offers made available personally by me to reach out Claudia, Sheldon, Councilman Wayhill, to make sure that they had the information for tonight. So for someone to say here that they didn't have the opportunity to get the information, even though it was on short notice, I reached out to make sure that those that had the information, including Mr. Wright, to be able to provide that information to each and every one of my colleagues that are sitting here tonight, because I know, to me, how important this issue is to have it done before Wednesday, before the governor appoints an emergency manager in Detroit. And if no one thinks that that's not important, then just look around here and see what an emergency manager has done. I, I, I'm just here as one person to help my colleagues, and I've done everything I can to make sure that they had the information, and there's a motion on the floor, it's been moved and supported. Mayor, did you want the last comment?
No, there's a motion on the floor, there's a motion on the floor. He cannot engage in regards to motion on the floor.
I'm sorry, Mayor, you're done. Row, Row Madam Clerk, motion is to postpone.
To postpone.
The motion is to postpone for Monday.
Ms. Crum?
Yes.
Ms. Poplar?
Yes.
Mr. Nolden?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
No.
Mr. Lawler?
Yes.
Mr. Neely?
Yes.
Mr. Wayhill?
No.
Ms. Sargentson?
Yes.
Mr. Kincaid?
No.
The vote is six yes, three no.
Okay. Thank you again for all being here. Okay. Okay, Councilwoman Poplar, I'm sorry for the delay on your special order.
Thanks.
No problems. Are we ready?
Just one second. Thanks again, Jeff.
You want the second special order now?
Okay, okay.
Um, once you get it to me, I'll look at it and see how much...
On the second special order, Madam Clerk?
Okay. It's kind of noisy.
Can I have a little order? We still have business to take care of, and we have another special order that's important, um, to this community. Madam Clerk?
Our next special order, our next special order was requested by councilperson Jacqueline Poplar to allow a presentation on youth employment by Mr. Donald Talbert, a retired member of the UAW Internal Affairs. Mr. Talbert?
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. What I wanted to talk about was, uh, and, and before I do, I want to give you a little background information. Uh, back in two thousand and four, uh, myself along with, uh, Robert Williams, uh, we had a, uh, we asked the University of Michigan if, if they would give, uh, some free, uh, reading and math assessment tests for, uh, for students in, in high school and, and college if they didn't go to the University of Michigan. So what ended up happening was, we needed to have a class, uh, with at least fifty people, or not a class, a pool of fifty people so that we could work with, so we could help them get jobs. And what happened was, we needed, uh, people to be at a, a certain math and reading level, and we, we tested almost four hundred, uh, uh, students, one, students and, and, uh, people who had graduated from high school and some of them were going to college, and we, we tested, uh, four hundred people in... and some of them were going to college, and we tested 400 people in order to get a pool of 50 candidates that we could use for a possible class so we could help people get jobs. And what we found out of that was that, out of the 50, 31 of them were either already going to college, had graduated from college, and were just looking for jobs. And our problem is that we run into high school students here in the city of Flint who graduate from high school, and they don't have the correct reading and math credentials to be able to go out and get a job. And as you can see what's happening here in the city, these kids don't have any skills, so nobody's going to hire them. And what we wanted to do was, we're working with the churches right now to start getting our young folks in classes so we could teach them reading comprehension, because that's what's missing in the school system here, is reading comprehension. Because we need people to be able to read a paragraph, and after they get done reading the paragraph, we need them to be able to answer questions about the paragraph that they just read, or the same thing with doing math problems. And so what we wanted to do was, we wanted to start getting students from the school system or through the churches and put these folks in classes so we could help teach them their reading and math skills, and hopefully it'll break down the crime problem in the city. And I heard tonight, Mr. Wayhill, he mentioned that there was concern about getting a certain amount of jobs for the city of Flint, you know, for the people here who stay here in the city of Flint. And my only question is, where are you going to get the skill of these people at? Because I just don't see it coming out of the city. You know, you're talking about getting welders and bricklayers, and you know, and all these different skills, you know, but where are you going to get these trained people at, you know, if they don't have any reading and math skills? And we just wanted to have the city council aware of this fact that the kids is coming out of high school, and they can't read and write, and it's leading to all kinds of problems, and it's sending our young folks right straight to Jackson. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I have a couple of questions.
You're waiting here.
Mr. Talbert, I have a couple. Can you come back to the mic? Thanks. I have a couple of questions. Thank you so much for coming, and I thank Mr. Miller for getting you here. But my question is, when will your classes be starting? Where will they be held? The community needs to know this.
Okay. Right now, I'm working with the Lehmans group, and we're trying to set up some different churches where we can meet at with the kids so we can start some classes, so they can improve their skills. And we don't have a date nailed down yet, but we're supposed to meet on the 13th of this coming month, not the 13th, the 13th of March.
Okay.
April, excuse me.
April.
Yeah, the 13th of April, and then we go finalize the plan so we can get started.
Okay, but basically, you can be reached at Antioch?
Right, or my home phone.
Okay, do you have a phone number?
Yeah, it's 810-787-6688.
Okay, I just wanted to get that on air, you know, on the video, so people that may be interested and they know this information is coming forth, and they may want to take the classes, and at least they can start knowing where to contact you at.
Right, and...
And Mr. Williams, Robert Williams.
Right, and what we had, what we was looking at is that we got a large number of churches that give classes to these young folks, and we like to know, you know, if they're doing any reading classes, because that's what the kids need, you know, in order to be successful, even reading the Bible, you know, you have to know how to read, you know?
Right.
So, you know, that's been our big focus right there.
Okay, well, we do have tutoring at Mount Calvary.
Right.
Missionary Baptist.
Right, some of them do, but too many of them don't.
Okay, but thank you so much again.
Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Talbert.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Over here.
Yep.
Mr. Talbert, are you working with youth that are out of high school, that have dropped out, or are in high school and need remedial assistance, or both, all of the above?
Well, we don't have it open to all of them.
Okay.
But we have a hard time getting the kids to just come and improve their reading comprehension because they got so many other things to keep them busy, you know?
Let me just mention a couple of things. I work at Mount Community College for my full-time position, and we have a literacy initiative that we're working on for the community, and I'd love to tell you more about that.
Sure.
So if you can either give your number to the clerk, and she can get it to me, and then I can contact you, I can share more about that.
Okay.
And then there's an organization in the community called Resource Genesee, which I used to be affiliated with, and they're working with out-of-school youth, youth that have dropped out of the Flint schools primarily, and they're working to get them connected to educational resources, so I can give you information on that as well.
Okay.
And are you also involved with the South Side?
Right.
Okay, that's where we met before, right?
Right.
Okay, thank you for all your efforts in the community.
Councilman Sargentson?
Well, I just wanted to say that there's some evil people out there that depend on our youth being dumbed down, and that pipeline from high school to Jackson is a very lucrative pipeline.
Right.
And they depend on poor and underdeveloped people to be, to make that pipeline up. And so the more we educate ourselves and our children, the better off we are going to be. They depend on us being uneducated and illiterate, and it's up to us to literate our family, friends, and anybody, because this is what they depend on. There's a lot of money being made on illiterate people.
Right, okay, and I just wanted to say one other thing.
Go ahead.
What I use to help these young folks improve their reading comprehension skill is, I have them sit down in front of a TV screen and put it on closed caption, and I have them try and read the closed captions, and keep trying until you are able to keep up with what you see on the TV screen. And you'll be surprised how quickly that that'll improve their reading comprehension. And that's what you need to do math, you know, is you got to have a reading skill.
Right. Well, thank you very much for coming, Mr. Talbert. It's good to see you.
Yeah, I have your number, Mr. Talbert.
Yep.
Already.
We have your number.
I have your number already.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilman Nolan?
I'm going to have to leave early, so I want to be excused, but I do have two appointments that Councilman Freeman said that he would move. One is for Quincy, he's going to be a temporary appointment to the Board of Review, and then one is for the Zoning Board of Appeals, Eric Wright. He's going to do that for me. Thank you, guys.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Councilman Nolan. Before I move on, I'd just like to recognize some of the University of Michigan students that are here out of the sociology department, Dr. Chandler's class. Thank you very much for coming this evening. We appreciate you being here. Okay, Madam Clerk, are there any petitions or unofficial communications?
No, Mr. President.
Are there any additional communications from city officials?
Not at this time.
Okay, now's the time set aside for members of the audience to address the city council. The clerk will call your name. Please come to the microphone. You have five minutes to speak, refrain from personal attacks on individuals or institutions. And our first speaker this evening, Madam Clerk?
Gertrude Marshall.
Mr. Mark?
Gertrude Marshall.
Ms. Marshall? Good evening.
Hi, my name's Gertrude Marshall, and I reside on Shion Street in Flint, Michigan. I had a long speech to tell you guys tonight, but I'm just going to simply make it plain and short and sweet and straight to the point. Jeremiah 5, verses 22 to 31. Read it. I'm not even going to elaborate on it after seeing what I saw tonight. Ms. Poplar, everybody's opinion is their opinion, but this opinion is God's opinion. I hope you read it, understand it, and abide by it. God bless you.
What was the verse again now?
Jeremiah, chapter 5, verses 20 to 31.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, Madam Clerk?
Our next speaker is Eric Mays.
Good evening, Eric.
Good evening. That was a long special order dealing with that water, and I'm kind of, I'm let down with that because out of all the times I come to council meeting, usually I can stay. I stayed in spite of that long special order, but I want to be at Macedonia in the choir, switched into my black with the citywide choir singing as we do that program for Woodrow Stanley. I voted, I hope he wins tomorrow. By the time this air, we'll know whether Ananet, Stanley, or Ted Henry is the new state senator. Congratulations to whoever wins that tomorrow, and congratulations, because you've already won by the time this air. The Kiergande Water Authority, I've listened, looked for years, with just the information I have and the way that I know Jeff Wright over the years, I'm a yes vote. Move forward. Whether you got authority or not, go on the record, move forward. I'm a yes vote. I've come out on the record before some of y'all based upon the information I've got. What appalled me about that whole process is, they were here. You didn't need subpoenas, but that's a 25-year decision. You should have put them under oath. Kwame, he in trouble for not talking in government under oath. When you're making 25-year decisions and you don't trust people, put them under oath, even if you trust them. They telling you the truth, but make sure. Those serious decisions, Ms. Brown should have been asked to come around, the mayor, finance, Howard, Crawford, and Mr. Wright should be telling y'all this under oath. That's just my opinion on how this government should work on serious decisions. I've got another one for you. And Ms. Poplar, I appreciate the special orders that you've done for your constituency, or if they're not, just the people. I like that you had a man here, and you had my man here, my UAW brother. I wish I could have do a special order on what I'm going to talk to y'all about now, but listen close, because it's just as serious to me as the other special orders that you've already heard from this morning or this afternoon. I looked at the Flint Journal yesterday, and it said, "The towers might tumble before the crime races start." I say, "You're kidding. I didn't even know that the transfer had been complete." You know, I got arrested for attempting to speak at a public hearing that I've alleged was not legitimate. See, the emergency manager orders that was posted to us on the public website, I believe them. Scott did a fine job testifying under oath as to emergency manager number 12 in my hearing, in my trial. It was more than a hearing. Peter Bade wanted to prosecute. Once the council leave, Ms. Poplar then had me took out, Scott then then had me walked out, but never to the extent of arresting prosecution for attempting to speak at a public hearing. This is a government, other people, for the people, and by the people, and the public hearings mean something. I'm going to wait so y'all can listen.
I'm listening, Eric.
I want everybody to listen, because it's that important. We paid six to seven million dollars for Genesee towers, I think, and they say they transferred for a dollar. And if that transfer is going to be legal and they going to get it for a dollar, Peter Bade, in my opinion, was the city attorney trying to take it from Kumar. Now he's switched hats, he the city, he was the Kumar, he was the attorney for Uptown. He lost, they tell me. And if it's true, now he's got a different hat on, he's the city attorney, he's giving it back to his client for a dollar. Seems to be a conflict. But they said until they did their due diligence, the transfer was contingent. And part of that due diligence had to do with what's called an obsolete property tax exemption certificate. And you get obsolete property tax exemption certificates under Public Act 146. Public Act 146 requires a public hearing. I got arrested in that required public hearing, but Public Act 146 dictates that that public hearing should be of the legislative body. Now, when I seen that, I say, "Well, I come to the hearing, it was not of the legislative body. Was it the emergency manager acting as the legislative body? He wasn't here. Did he designate the city attorney's office to act as the legislative body? Well, if he did, it says in Public Act 146, after the public hearing, there should be a motion and a vote at that public hearing." That didn't happen. The public hearing was adjourned. The resolution came three days later, July the 5th. The district was established by resolution on the same day that the tax exemption was issued.
Go ahead and continue, Eric, because I know, and then, I know it's not normal, but there's one question that I need to ask you prior to...
Well, I got arrested for going over the rules, I'll just say, ask the question.
Well, I'm going to wait till you're done, please.
Once we went to trial, it was certain things that was excluded. Don't worry about me, I got a fool for attorney. They say anybody represent themselves got a fool. So my attorney is going to appeal this in circuit court, and in the meantime, there's going to be injunctive relief asked for, hopefully, to keep this from coming down. And I'm here to tell the council, I don't want to do this by myself, because guess what? If I'm right, and if that public hearing, according to emergency manager 12, order 12, should have been held by this city council in this chambers, because remember, emergency manager order 12 says, until, at the bottom of every order, until it's amended, modified, and changed by subsequent order, y'all getting a salary to hold public hearings. And y'all probably wouldn't have arrested us, and it'd have been conducted better, and then it'd have been a motion made. When I called the State Tax Commission, this is what they're telling me. The tribunal and the commission meet on April the 8th, I'll be there from Flint. And I'm telling you, it says right in Public Act 146, that if this procedure was done wrong, it may jeopardize the tax abating. There's confusion from the records as when the application was put in. Some say it was put in when the money was paid. Well, that might be out of order. Some said it was put in after it was supposed to. You got a lot of mess that's being sorted out, but the bottom line is this. Do the council really care whether or not they tear down the towers, transfer it for a dollar, or did everything right? I'm telling you, I've had people subpoenaed under oath, records transferred to me under subpoena, and I'm telling you, stuff, in my opinion, at this point, probably ain't been done right. And so they say the issue is this. If there was not a motion at that hearing, and no action taken at that hearing, was that process right? And was that really a right hearing and procedure?
Thank you.
In saying that, we moving forward, but what will y'all do?
Think, Eric, just real quick, and I don't know if this is a question or probably more of my opinion, that I know the emergency manager has a lot of authority, and I know that he can act on certain things, but when it comes to tax abatements and tax facility exemption certificates, I think the state makes them follow that process. And I don't believe that that process was followed the night of the public hearing, and I don't believe there was action, so I don't believe that the facility tax exemption certificate is a valid and in place at this particular time. And I think you probably will be able to prove that at some point in time, so I don't know if you want to respond to that, but that's probably more of an opinion than it is a question to you.
Real quick, if I may, and who am I to say that I understand law? I just got found guilty, but that's a joke, I'm appealing. I'm appealing. But the point is this. I do think I understand law, and I do see what happened here. And I know that it was a coincidence to me when they say before the Krim start. Because last year, Pastor Flynn and the group that we was working with, we had a big sign on Genesee Towers and was out at the Krim. And I'm here to tell you, I'm doing this on this public mic because I don't think Pastor Flynn and everybody else who was in an uproar about Genesee Towers know that we have a chance to block it. I didn't even know when I got arrested that it might turn into information together that could block it. I'm not going to call myself the rose of parks of blocking Genesee Towers because... But my point is this. It's an opportunity to then came out of here to block it, postpone it, and make them do it right. Whether you take part of it in your official capacity or you inquire as an individual, I'm asking the community to not sit still. Anybody can call me who want to help. My cell number is nine two two forty-eight sixty, and I think we headed to circuit court to figure out whether or not this was done properly and whether we can get more than a dollar out of Genesee Towers. Plus, that tax abatement gives up three million that could be used for police. So I stand before you on an issue that could put revenue in our pockets, millions of dollars. God bless. I appreciate your indulgence. It wasn't a special privilege, but nine two two forty-eight sixty. And it's... You laughing, but it wasn't the Eric Mays Show.
Thanks, Eric.
You did a good job talking about the water, Josh. I agree with you.
Thank you, Eric.
Neely, well, you can boo, I agree. Neely, I think the votes is there, and if it do, I hope you be the one on the board. And if y'all can do that, that'll balance it out because I know Neely will give us the information that we need. God bless.
Thanks, Eric. Okay, next speaker, Madam Clerk?
Our next speaker is Carolyn Shannon. Ms. Shannon?
To the most honorable counsel, to the very honorable President Scott Kincaid, and to the lovely city clerk, Inez Brown. I am very privileged to be here tonight, and it was the most interesting evening for me. And I'd like to say on Mr. Mays' behalf, he can look at things that I cannot look at, and I'm sure he's right. I come before you because I think we have the same dreams and the same feeling for Flint. The thing is, I think we can work together on this project. I talked to Mayor Dane Walling. I said, if you want to go out with a bang, then you must work with the council to make sure we get the deed to the land across from Doyle Rider School for McCree Theater. I'm very much interested in all of the arts. But right now, I think McCree Theater has been shortchanged. I'm very familiar with Bauer Theater. I'm very familiar with the Flint Institute of Music, the Flint Institute of Arts, Boys and Girls Club of America, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, a lot of the things that are dear to my heart. So I'm asking you to work with Mayor Dane Walling to secure the deed, have him give me the deed, so I may present this deed to Mr. Charles... Mr. and Mrs. Charles Winfrey. I've known them for many, many years, and I'm asking you to give us a chance to have the state of the art building. I'm asking for a Colosseum-style building. Nothing like anything we have. And also, I would like in this building, a bunker. So if we have any disaster, it would be an underground bunker. And also, I'd like on the top level, a place where we can entertain people. It's going to cost a lot of money, but I believe if we had the deeds to that land, the Chippewa side and the Saginaw side across from Doyle Rider, I believe we can start a national fundraiser. But without that deed, we cannot start a fundraiser. So I'm asking the council, everybody, this will... This will help everybody in the city. That particular space should be for education and entertainment. And I am very happy, and it gives me great joy to see how wonderful you're working together in Flint to make this a very wonderful and beautiful place to stay. We need that theater. The theater where it is now is not conducive for all the citizens of Flint. But if it was near the riverfront, the hub of the city, it could sustain itself. But in that location, it's not sustainable. So I think we should have a new building now. And I'm asking each council person, north, south, east, and west, to join Mayor Dane Walling in securing that deed. I already talked to State Representative Dan Killde several years ago. He said to me and Mrs. James, if we do not own that land, we will buy it back so that McCree Theater can have it. We deserve it, and I thank you very much for your patience. But I know each and one... Each one of you love the city of Flint, and I know you love the theater, and I know you love the arts, as I do. And... But I'd like to say, we need to make a move on that water now. I don't like to get into the politics of things, but why delay it? You're not going to get... You're not going to get any more or better results than what you had tonight. My priest would say, "Am I clear as spring water?" And we'd smile at mess. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Carolyn.
Mr. President.
Uh, Jackie.
Yes. I thank Ms. Shannon for all that she wants to do for McCree Theater. And I agree that they need a state-of-the-art building, and I thank you for your passion. But there is one thing that I don't agree with you on, and that is moving it from the second ward, from Pearson and Cloverland. I would suggest that if we're going to do anything, because we've taken everything from the north side of Flint, and I suggest that you not help move the McCree Theater from the north side of Flint, okay? And it is in the master plan that we're looking at, to keep it right there, but only to expand it. So if we do anything of a state-of-the-art building, then let's just tear down the old Selby School and build a McCree Theater upright there and pave the parking lot, and we can do a lot. But I refuse to lose the McCree Theater from the second ward of the city of Flint. I support you wholeheartedly, but it's not going anywhere if I can help. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie.
Our next speaker is Mr. A.C. Dumas.
Um, Mr. Dumas left. Yeah.
The next speaker is Mr. Gregory Eason.
Uh, he left.
He left also. Mr. Donald Talbert, I believe, has already spoken unless he's planning to speak again.
No.
Okay. Quincy Murphy?
Quincy? Good evening, Quincy.
Good evening. Quincy Murphy, um, tonight I want to speak... I got a letter that I'll present to you guys afterwards. Um, the urban transformation development, which is the former Garfield Bunch Community Service Corporation, recently submitted a proposed plan in early 2012 to the former emergency manager Mike Brown and the city council to review and consider supporting. We are excited about farmers' market proposal to relocate in downtown Flint. We are seeking support from Uptown Development, city council, and administration to meet, discuss, and support future satellite markets in the city of Flint and not just downtown Flint. We support and understand the concept of relocating farmers' market in downtown due to location, investment, new businesses, and close to the bus terminal. We understand there are additional new partnerships with other colleges, businesses, and nonprofits surrounding the proposed new farmers' market location. What we would like to see is a collaborative effort to develop satellite sites, such as the Fresh Flint Garden Center proposal and other outdoor vegetable stand sites throughout the city of Flint. We hope that minority farmers are given equitable opportunities to sell fresh produce, develop small gardens, and train entrepreneurs. What this is, is this was a plan that the students from Baker College, from the American Institute of Design, put together for me probably about a year ago. It took them about a year to put this together. So it's been about in a two-year process. What we were trying to do is develop a Fresh Vegetable Garden Center on the north end of Flint at the old Odyssey Daycare Center. And I presented this plan to Mike Brown at one of the meetings, and I believe I came before the city council before and presented a plan over here. What we are trying to do, despite we love what's going on downtown, and we look forward to seeing new projects go on downtown, but we got to also understand that we out here on a grassroots level. We trying to do something. And if I'm not mistaken, in some type of clause, it says that the city cannot support any other vegetable garden center besides the one that they proposing downtown. So I would ask that we look in further detail to make sure that's not correct. And if it is correct, that they can't support any other farmers' market, we suggest that we make amendments in a resolution or any agreed-upon agreement that we can support other farmers' market. Because we not here to say we don't support it. We just here to say that we have some ideas, and we want to do some things on the north end of Flint. And there are some people out here doing something besides supporting everything that's happening downtown. Not that we against it, but I just want to make sure that you guys know that we did have some plans, and we look forward to having some plans to have a farmers' market on the north end of Flint because we want it accessible to low-income, to moderate families, and people that's dealing with health issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Quincy. Okay, our next speaker, Madam Clerk?
Our next speaker is Chris Del Maroni.
Thank you. My name is Chris Del Maroni, and I live in Flint, Michigan. On the water pipeline, KWA, I want to point out a few things from what was going on earlier this evening and then some questions that I believe were missed. One is, why is it that the county is so concerned about us and our water? They're a separate entity. What is it that makes them want us to join them? You need to ask yourself that. Why are we going to be buying more water? Why are we going to commit to more water than what we will use? And I believe it is because they need a bigger partner to help defray some of the cost. And then, as other communities say, LaPierre need more water than what they commit to, we will be forced to sell the water to LaPierre at cost. So what I would propose is that we buy the least... That the city of Flint commit to the least amount of water that we need. And any extra water that we may need, we simply buy it from the authority. We heard that tonight. It would be sold to us at cost. So don't commit to more than what we need. Commit to the absolute minimum, and anything extra, we can buy from KWA. Keep in mind, the city of Flint will not control their rates. KWA, the authority, will control the rates, just like Detroit controls the rates now. Granted, we will have members on the KWA authority with vote, with voice and vote, unlike Detroit. But we ourselves, the city of Flint, will not control the rates. My other concern is that the water will be used for fracking. Okay? If you're unfamiliar with fracking, it's where a lot of water, a great amount of water, along with some chemicals is injected into the ground. It breaks apart the rock, the shell. It releases gas, and then the gases is taken out. The water that's left over is rendered virtually useless. You cannot drink it. You cannot process it. You cannot clean it. You can't do anything with it. The other two counties that are involved with the KWA, they have a large number of wells in their community. You need to ask ourselves, why is so much of the fruit and vegetables, why is it processed in the south? They don't have that much water, but it's still continued to be processed in the south. I believe it's processed in the south because that's where much of the produce is grown. So just like you, you bring things together to process it, and then you distribute it back out. It's much easier to bring a little bit of produce from Michigan and Wisconsin and Minnesota, wherever, and join it with large amounts of fresh produce and process it somewhere else. Uh, Councilman Wayhill, your question on who will work on this pipeline, it's a real good one. The answer is found in Smith Village here in Flint. I mean, who built that housing? That was done in Indiana. I mean, that wasn't even done in Genesee County. I mean, those homes were built in Indiana and then brought up here. The Kettering Gateway, when they had to take some trees down, they did not even employ people to cut trees who lived in Flint, Michigan. The company was from outside of the state of Michigan. So I, you know, ask yourself, how many eighteen- or twenty-two-year-olds from the north side of Flint are going to be going out to LaPierre County to work? I mean, does anyone have an answer? It's going to be like zero. I mean, that's just the way it is. I think we should look for federal money for the pipeline. And the argument is that it's a national security issue. Okay? If something happens to the Detroit pipeline, virtually millions of people will be without water. Our argument is that if there is this other pipeline, the Karydon de Pipeline, and something happens to Detroit or to the KWA, we can use one or the other. So it becomes a security issue.
Chris, could you please sum up?
Yes, and I think... I think I have. And the only other thing I'll say is that I know I've heard Jeff say, at least on... Jeff Wright, the county joint commissioner, on two different occasions, that before he moves totally forward on this project, he wants the city council to buy into it. Okay? That he is... He does not feel comfortable. He does not want to move forward without the city council's vote. I mean, you can call him and ask him, but I know on two different occasions publicly where I was, that's what he had mentioned. That Tucker and Young study, Councilman Neely, that was one thing you'd asked Josh. That was one thing that Sheldon had asked for, along with the other thing that Ambrosia, Ambrosia, whatever his last name is, that they had hidden. They're not being upfront with you guys, and that's unfortunate. It's a big decision. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Any other speakers, Madam Clerk?
Yes, we have one last speaker, Mr. Alex Harris. Mr. Harris? Mr. Harris?
Alex, good evening.
Hi there. How are you speaking here?
No, I want you to come to the mic. I just...
I have one voice you probably could hear, unfortunately.
We could hear you from the first floor, Alex.
Counsel President Kincaid, that's beneath your dignity. Well, maybe not. Anyway, couple things on the development, what are they, I still can't even think of the acronym for that water operation, oh, KWA. Believe it or not, I, without the vast amount of information that you guys have at your disposal, on the surface, with my limited intellect, it does seem like a prudent venture to move into. I am, like some on the council, a little concerned about making a rash decision, though others on council claim that there's been a plethora of information or extensive documentation for some time. In talking to the drain commissioner, and I have a few times, and I have great respect for him, one of the, well, never mind, I won't editorialize, I just have a lot of respect for him, he did say something rather interesting to me, that this week, and he mentioned Wednesday to you, and maybe some of you are aware of this, but there is a very, you know, promising financial incentive, very promising. I invite you all to ask him if you're not aware. As I said, maybe all of you or some of you are aware, but those sort of things don't come along every day, and, you know, I do, you know, I don't profess to be a great, you know, financial wizard, but I think I have some understanding of how markets work. But what I would say is that perhaps, you know, expedience would be a very valuable tool, and I wish you guys hadn't have pushed it back as far as a week or whatever. What day, Mr. Counsel President?
We're gonna meet again Monday at 5:30.
Oh. Well, you know, maybe you'll, you know, rethink that and move it up a few days, but certainly, you know, if your questions are satisfied and you see the wisdom of this project, you'll move forward because it really isn't about the idea of what the immediacy offers, but what long-term, what long-term the city will gain from this. And need I have to remind any of you, water is probably one of the most precious resources that probably is being diminished daily in this country. And I understand from others and some things I've read, that Ontario has certainly taken advantage of some business enterprises that have afforded themselves the access to the lake you're on front on the Canadian side. I do think that Flint might find itself in a more advantageous situation going forward, and it requires a forward-thinking mentality. Don't be wedded to the now and the present. And the one thing I did want to say, you know, not necessarily trying to take sides, but I thought Councilman Neely gave the city attorney, and I wish he'd have stayed, he did his normal thing and taken off at a certain point, you know, many times he doesn't even show up. But the bottom line is, you were exactly right to ask in a simple, direct way whether this was merely just a, you know, informal resolution, like asking everyone to, you know, hop, skip, and jump on Friday, March 20th, because the city council voted for it, or whether this had, you know, a legal contractual binding of a decision-making process to it. And, you know, I don't know whether he was too dense to understand that simple question, but he certainly wasn't very forthcoming. But I also have been told by some who profess to know that the EFM is favorably disposed of this. So I think in that vein, the city council's approval, along with the predisposed favor of the EFM and the mayor, certainly would bode well for you making a prompt decision and hopefully one in the more favorable end. But what did slay me is our fine young mayor with that ridiculous assertion that that document, what's it called, the DQ document, whatever heading or whatever it was, that somehow he saw it on a desk somewhere in a meeting in Lansing. But boy, that was about the best he could get, is a glimpse at it, like it was the Pentagon Papers or something.
Tucker Young study?
Yeah, Tucker Young. Well, anyway, to make a long story short, wouldn't it just be rather simple to say it's a public document or somehow it's, you know, not, and I have a hard time believing, a document that, if I'm correct, does it speak to the quality of the Flint River and feasibility? No? What's it speak to, if I may be enlightened?
The Tucker Young study?
Yes.
It was a study, my understanding, I don't want to...
No, go ahead, I want to be enlightened.
Just real quick, it's my understanding that the Tucker Young study was done by the city of Detroit to try to...
Oh, I've confused it, yes.
To try to convince people that going with Carradonte was not the most cost-effective way to get water and that we should stay with Detroit, so, I mean, but...
Yes, I, thank you, Councilman, you've actually turned me around. And wasn't what has been purported to be the findings were, that it did not dispel the idea that the city of Flint would be better off, you know, moving in a different direction?
And I have no idea what that study purported is.
Oh, you yourself are unaware of its contents. Well, it would be nice to know.
Would you please sum up though, Alex?
Yeah, I'll sum up. Basically, despite the lack of legal authority that the city attorney provided, despite some of the more foolish things I heard from the mayor and a few others, I still, on the surface, and as I said, I don't have the documentation and information that all you have, but I would think long-term that this is the right project and you should, it should be incumbent on each one of you, if you haven't come to a decision, to rapidly accumulate the necessary documentation to make that decision and come forward and provide this community with that sort of decision. And as I said, the proper decision, I think, I gotta believe, is especially in light of the markets and the incredible interest rates and lending rates available today, it would be a prudent financial investment by the city of Flint.
Thanks, Alex.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Councilman Wayhill?
I, Councilman Neely and I were on opposite sides of the vote earlier, whether to postpone or not, but we've had some dialogue since that vote a few minutes ago, and I'm wondering if we might, instead of having a meeting, a special meeting on Monday, if Thursday would be amenable to the rest of the council. I believe Councilman Neely feels he can get the information he needs by then, and Councilman Lawler as well, if I'm not mistaken. I'm not sure about the folks on the other side of the chamber here.
The only, the only thing for me is, I'm attending a Michigan Municipal League Conference on Thursday on shared services, it's being presented by Roger Fraser, the deputy director, since we're going through this transition of trying to, I'm trying to gather as much information as I can, I've shared that with some of my colleagues on the council, I shared it with Councilman Lawler the other day that I was going to be going. So Thursday, I would not be able to be back in time, the conference is from 1:00 to 4:30, I believe, and it's in Kalamazoo, so...
Okay.
I don't know that I could be back in time. Friday doesn't work for me at all, I'm in Detroit. I'm sorry?
Wednesday.
I don't know if that's enough time.
Do we have enough time to post the meeting, and does that give enough time to colleagues to...
You know, we voted on Monday, let's just keep it up Monday, and I appreciate the dialogue, but I, I mean, you guys can have the meeting without me, I don't really care.
Okay, I just thought I'd offer the suggestion.
We want everybody to be here and everybody to be happy.
I just, the only reason I say that, Dale, is because I did, I did...
No need to explain, I completely understand.
I think it's important for me to go to this conference...
I agree.
And I just can't be back.
I agree, no problem.
So we're on, we're on our regular agenda now. Or did somebody else have something before we move on? Appointments.
Mr. President?
We have a number of appointments this evening.
Yes, Mr. President, if I could, if you don't mind, we have six appointments to various boards and commissions. On the sixth appointment, which is on the back of your agenda, on page six, we're going to have to amend that particular one, so if we could just take the first five, first of all.
Mr. President, I'd move Resolution 130, if it's all right with everybody else, 166 through 170.
Support. 166 through...
170, page five.
170 has been moved and supported. Discussion?
Just one question.
Councilman Neely?
Yeah, 130, 166, the appointment for Quincy Murphy, why is it temporary?
If I might, Mr. President?
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Journey, Bill Journey, was appointed to that position at the last council meeting permanently, and something came up unexpectedly, and he could not attend the meeting this week, and he wants to continue to serve though. And so, in the past, when those kind of things have happened, we have been allowed to do like temporary appointments to that particular board, to ensure that they have a full complement of members in attendance.
Understood, I just wanted, that was just, I hadn't seen that, I hadn't seen that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. They've been moved and supported. Discussion, roll, Madam Clerk?
Ms. Poplar?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Lawler?
Yes.
Mr. Neely?
Yes.
Mr. Wayhill?
Yes.
Mr. Sargentson?
Yes.
Mr. Kincaid?
Yes.
Ms. Kroom?
Yes.
The vote is eight yes, zero no.
Okay, on 171, Madam Clerk, you say that there needs to be amendment?
Yes, we need to amend that to show that Mr., this is the Citizens Bank representative to the DDA board...
Replacing Dave Stickell?
And what he's doing is spilling out the unexpired term of Mr. Dave Stickell. So we need to reword that to show that, to that effect. So if we could, and that would become a point one.
What does it need to be reworded to?
To say that it's...
In other words, instead of the term expiring in 2017, it would expire April 2015, he's completing Mr. Stickell's term. And then later, he can be reappointed in his own right.
Dave Stickell from Citizens Bank has moved on, and he is replacing, Mr. Vinner is replacing the unexpired term of Mr. Stickell until the regular appointment comes up, so...
But the resolution gives him a full term, and that's incorrect.
Yeah, yeah, so we need to just, do we know the date of the...
Why don't we just postpone it till Monday?
No, no, no.
Well, I think there's some business for the DDA.
Right, right. All we're doing is retyping it, I've already told Pete what we're doing, and he has no problem with it. Pete Bade.
So we, all we need to do is move the amended resolution, and the clerk will address it. Okay, is that correct?
Yes, we'll take care of it.
Okay. Is there a motion on...
To amend.
To amend?
So moved.
It's been moved and supported, discussion, roll?
Mr. President, can I ask a question?
Yes, Councilman Wayhill.
For clarification, something that I most likely should know already, but Citizens Bank has a designated spot on the DDA board?
I believe in the past, they have, and basically, you know, and I don't know why, but they do. So what that, what this resolution is doing is continuing that.
Yeah, is that, is that something that's part of the bylaws or tradition?
I don't recall. It might just be tradition.
Well, I would, I would only point out the obvious, that Citizens is in a state of transition and, you know, but I'm willing to vote on this tonight, but I, it seems to me that the term expiring in 2017 is far off into the future and most likely will have a different name on the bank at that time.
The term will now expire 2015.
Pardon me?
The term will expire 2015, we're correcting that.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. My apologies. Well, anyway, I thought I'd mention them. Piece about Citizens. Thanks.
Okay, on the amendment, roll?
Let's see, Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Lawler?
Yes.
Mr. Neely?
Yes.
Mr. Wayhill?
Yes.
Mr. Sargentson?
Yes.
Mr. Kincaid?
Yes.
Ms. Kroom?
Yes.
Ms. Poplar?
Yes.
The vote is eight yes, zero no to amend.
Mr. President, I move 130, 171 dot one.
Support? Moved and supported, roll, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Lawler?
Yes.
Mr. Neely?
Yes.
Mr. Wayhill?
Yes.
Mr. Sargentson?
Yes.
Mr. Kincaid?
Yes.
Ms. Kroom?
Yes.
Ms. Poplar?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
The vote is eight yes, zero no on the 131, 71 point one.
Okay, there's no other business before the city council, we have, yeah, I'll get right to you, we have a special meeting on Monday, the 18th, I hope everyone doesn't come in with bloodshot eyes after Sunday, St. Patrick's Day. Councilman Neely?
Yes, I just want to send a referral down to Mr. Kurtz and the order administration requesting the information to be provided for all council members at, in the council office. Paper copy, I prefer, if some would like it transmitted by email, that'd be fine as well. One is the Tucker Young independent study for the Carradonte Pipeline. Two, the document that Jerry Ambrose and/or documents that he was reading from tonight, the spreadsheets could be provided for all council members as soon as possible, and so we can get started trying to get that information. Josh, I'm seeking your assistance on making sure that we probably get that information as soon as possible to this body. And also, to provide clarification for this body and the community, because Peter Bade did say that this is a financial issue, and this issue could just reside with Kurtz. I mean, if he makes the total decision for this community as emergency financial manager, if times of essence, he has the ability to move forward without this body at all now.
Right, that's true.
And so, you know, what Peter Bade said, our city attorney, is saying that, you know, hey, we can vote on this and that we should vote on this, Mr. Wright said he wanted to hear from us, I have no problem with that, but I want to find out where our authority begins and ends as it relates to this issue, because it is my belief, as the emergency financial manager, he makes all decisions as it relates to financing, finances of this municipality. So if we were to pass this resolution, he could have very well just left it on the table, vetoed it, and/or just did nothing at all. It is the will of the state to run the finances of this community, so he has the decision-making ability with his team. So if it's of the urgency, Kurtz has that ability to move forward without the approval or disapproval of this body, as they have done so in the past. So I just wanted to make that clear so people understood that, because Peter Bade pretty much said that. Thank you.
You want clarification on this issue?
Yes, clarification, who will make the ultimate decision on this issue?
From a legal standpoint, I think you're looking at the legal...
To modify that, Janelle, is who has the legal authority to make the decision? And that could be to Peter Bade's office and Kurtz.
Any other comments by councilmembers? I got just a couple, and I appreciate that, Councilman Neely. And I just have a question, did that issue come up Friday when you met with him?
When I met with Mr. Kurtz, and I appreciate the fact that he was able to meet with me on short notice, much more short notice than I have ever been able to get into his office, so I thank you for your getting that opportunity for me to talk with him. He referred, for a lot of my questions, he referred or deferred to other personnel and other people, Jerry Ambrose and others, that he didn't, could not answer the questions. He was accommodating, but I left with more questions than I started with.
Okay, all right. And then I just have one referral, and Councilman Lawler, I know I talked to you about this, but I would really like to know what the real numbers are with Smith Village. It's my understanding that out of all the homes that have been completed and that are for sale in Smith Village, that no applicants qualified, and that there are no current individuals with contracts to move into Smith Village. And I, I just need that for my own information, this is a project that I supported a long time ago, I had questions about this project, and I, we put a lot of money into this project. When I say "we," the city of Flint, along with the federal government, and put millions of dollars... of dollars into this project. And if we're having problems getting qualified individuals to be able to move into Smith Village, then I would hope that Councilman Lawler and those that are involved would start to have some sort of dialogue on what the future of Smith Village is going to be. And the only reason I say that is because we had a project that was done in the fourth ward, Sugar Maple Farms, and most of those homes have been demolished after they've been built. So I do not want to see that in Smith Village. So I want to make that referral to the administration, to Ed Kurtz. I want to know how many qualified buyers, if any, have moved into Smith Village and what are the projected plans for Smith Village in the upcoming months, so... Councilman Lawler?
Thank you for that. I had, prior to you asking me about that about a week ago, I had made a, sent a communication to Mr. Kurtz, Howard Croft, Tracy Atkinson, and Dave Salis, requesting that information, and I have not gotten a response.
If you don't mind, I'm going to follow up on it then.
And when, if you find something out, would you make sure that I get it?
I will make sure I give you a copy of whatever I get.
Thank you.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Wright from the county was kind enough to have the document that you all wanted delivered about a half hour ago. We've made copies and you all can go to the office after the meeting and pick your copies up. It's about a hundred-page document.
Okay. All right, no further business for the council? We are adjourned. Thank you again, everyone.